Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. If you would like to testify, you must fill out a testimony slip in the back of the room with one of the sergeant-at-arms. If you would like to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. No one may approach Diaz at any point during this hearing. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Carmen Delarosa, Chair of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. Welcome to today's hearing where we will be assessing the administration of city benefits for current municipal employees. This hearing will center on the following three employee benefit programs. The Employee Assistance Program, which provides education, information, counseling, and individualized referrals to assist with a wide range of personal and social problems. The Management Benefit Fund, which provides a range of supplemental benefits, including dental and vision insurance, and the Flexible Spending Accounts, which allow employees to set aside a portion of their pre-tax income into accounts maintained for certain health and dependent care expenses. A competitive employee benefits package is crucial to support the current employees and to strengthen the city's ability to recruit top talent. However, a strong benefits package is only part of the equation. The real challenge lies in ensuring that New York City employees can fully realize their benefits. Given that employee benefit programs are a crucial tool for the recruitment and retention of staff in the municipal workforce, it is imperative that such benefits are not simply off, are not just simply offered on paper, but are accessible to employees in a meaningful way. The committee is concerned that the administration of these programs are plagued with unnecessary processing delays, technicalities, and other bureaucratic problems that can frustrate employees' attempts to realize benefits or deter employees from seeking benefits altogether. Additionally, many employees may benefit from receiving more comprehensive instruction about the programs. At this hearing, the committee's focus is to gain a deeper understanding of O L R's efforts to not only create employee benefits, but also the critical role it plays in facilitating their accessibility and usability for employees. In addition to today's oversight topic, we will be hearing the following legislation: Preconsidered Intro, sponsored by myself, related to O L R's administration of city benefits. Intro 265, sponsored by Councilmember Joseph, which would call upon the municipal agencies to expedite the health insurance coverage processing for employees who transfer from one agency to another. And finally, Resolution 5, sponsored by Minority Leader Borelli, which would call upon the state legislature to pass legislation regarding the reinstatement of employees who were terminated pursuant to the vaccine mandate. I'd like to thank committee staff for their hard work in preparing for this hearing. Policy Analyst Elizabeth Arts and Legislative Council Ria Osawara. I'd also like to thank my staff: Chief of Staff James, Legislative Director Kiana Diaz, and Communications Director Frenef Amilia. I would like to recognize that we've been joined by my colleagues, Councilmembers Joseph, Ariola, Minority Leader Borelli, Councilmember Botcher, and on Zoom, Councilmembers Moya, Menon, and Kabon. I now turn to Councilmember Rita Joseph, who is present to make a statement on her bill, Intro 265.
Thank you, Chair Delarosa. I am excited to introduce Bill 265 as being heard in the council, a local law to amend the Administrative Code of New York City about health insurance for city employees. The bill mandates that each agency must expedite process to ensure continuous health coverage for employees transferring between city agencies, preventing any lapse during transition. This issue is particularly close to my heart. Before becoming a council member, I served as a New York City public school teacher for 22 years. When I transitioned to the council, I experienced change in my benefits, including disruption in my health coverage. As someone who had open-heart surgery, maintaining my health insurance is vital. In New York City, employees moving from one job to another should not face any interruption in their health insurance. As this can jeopardize their well-being, this bill would make sure that it doesn't happen anymore. And when I showed up for my cardiology appointment, I was told that I had no health coverage. 2008, I had open-heart surgery, and I do follow yearly basis with my cardiologist. And come to find out, when I became a council member, I had no health insurance when I showed up at my cardiologist. I wouldn't want this experience to happen to anyone moving from one city agency to another. I'm moving from New York City Public Schools to New York City Council, not from a state to city agency, but from city to city. So that's what this bill would do. So thank you, Councilmember Chair Delarosa, for considering my bill today. I'm eager to hear feedback from the city agencies and representative. I will ask questions as needed, but my goal is to see this bill pass in this, in this committee. Thank you, Chair Delarosa.
Thank you, Councilmember Joseph, and also for your advocacy and sharing your story. I want to recognize that we've also been joined by Councilmember Salam. Welcome. And I will now turn it over to Minority Leader Joseph Borelli, who will, who is present to make a statement on Reso 5.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for indulging us by giving us this opportunity to have this hearing about an issue that frankly, I think most people would have assumed we would not still be talking about in 2024. I had some prepared remarks, but today, when I got here and I saw all of the people here to testify on this resolution about the vaccine mandates, I was struck by, by the irony in that you folks aren't in your firehouses, or your schools, or your DOT garages, or wherever. And you're not there because you're some sort of cootie-written plague carrier or something. And yet, here you are, and not one of you was stopped before coming into City Hall. Not one of you was asked whether you were vaccinated. Not one of you was required to put on a mask. Our friends here from the administration, although not responsible for this policy, I noticed none of them are in space suits out of fear that they might contract some horrible disease from you. And yet, you are terminated from your employment, which for all of you was exemplary and fine. None of you are terminated for any other reasons. You're terminated because you refused to take a vaccine. So you can't go to your firehouse, you can't go to your school, you can't go to your D E P plant, but here you are, just feet away from the mayor's office. You just walk through the room where all of the policies of the cities are made. You're in a committee room where policy for the entire city is routinely discussed and made. You're in, you're in essentially, you're in the nerve center, the heartbeat of the city, and there's no problem with you here, but because of a wrong policy that was implemented, a wrong policy that was implemented, that is the only reason you don't have your job. And now, it's easy to say because we know it was a wrong policy. If we look at the timeline, December 6, 2021, Mayor de Blasio announces a vaccine mandate. February 11, a few months later, 1,780 city employees, some of them are here, were fired due to noncompliance with the COVID vaccine mandate. Just six months later to the day, August 11, six months. Now, I mean, just think about how many terrible policies are made in this building that go way longer than six months, all the time. We make bad policy professionally here, and it stays in place for years. But this policy was so fundamentally flawed and so stupid that the CDC, the follow-the-science people, the brain surgeons, literally, they said, oh, no, no, no. The CDC issues new guidance acknowledging that vaccines do not prevent community spread, acknowledging that their own recommendations no longer ask for mass vaccination policies, concluding, quote, "There are no public health benefits sweeping COVID-19 vaccine mandates." Meaning, there is no benefit for us to having this policy. And at that point, or really, September 20, when the mayor acknowledged that we're no longer to have a vaccine policy going forward, this would have been the great time to say, hey, you know what? We had this COVID crisis. We did the best we could. We followed the science, but when the science changed, we changed our policy. That would have been the right thing to do. But instead, the administration still refuses to acknowledge that their policy interminating over 1,000 employees was the wrong decision. I would say you were treated like plague victims, but the truth is, if you had the bubonic plague, you'd still have your civil service protections, you'd still be protected by HIPAA, you'd still have your job, and we'd be paying through your health benefits for the treatment you'd be receiving. So you're treated worse than plague victims. And that's why this hearing is so important, not just to give a voice to you, but to give a voice from City Hall and hopefully acknowledge that this policy has been wrong for over two years. So thank you.
Thank you, Minority Leader Borelli. We'll now turn to Councilmember Ariola, who will also make a statement on Reso 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Delarosa, and thank you, Minority Leader, for initiating Reso 5 and for your wonderful remarks. Reso 5 supports state legislation that would require the City of New York to reinstate city workers that had resigned, retired, or terminated for noncompliance with the COVID-19 vaccine mandate. Many people do not know that there was no protocol in place when the mandates were lifted that dictated how New York City workers would be brought back into the workforce. Some were asked to sign waivers for their civil service rights, while others were in the exact same position or similarly situated, and they were asked to sign a waiver. The state bill seeks to allow any worker who wishes to return to be able to do so, just as many before them have returned. In February of 2023, the COVID-19 vaccine mandate was lifted. Many were really so finally excited, especially us, to be, so that you would be able to return to work, the job that you loved, and after you had helped people during the entire COVID-19 crisis and shutdown. But for many, that excitement quickly faded. Workers were not told how to reapply. There wasn't any outreach being done by agencies to guide those who had been separated from their city employment, and there was no protocol that had been outlined for agencies to reinstate the workers. Some were getting answers to emails from their former supervisors, while others were not. The Law Department seemed to act in a silo on many of these issues, and you will hear about them today. With no rhyme or reason, they made their decisions. You will hear from firefighters who are similarly situated, who were named on the same lawsuit, one of which has been reinstated with the department since May of 2023, and one who continues to sit in limbo with no income, waiting to return to the department he bravely served for 16 years. You will hear about cases where Article 78 lawsuits were won and city workers were reinstated immediately, while others, similarly situated, and won their Article 78, still remain separated from city service, leaving them to have to find new ways to provide for their families and pay their bills. You will hear from those who retired, not having to sign a waiver, even if they were a complainant on an active lawsuit, and they were reinstated, while others were not given that ability. So what Reso 5 does is support the state's agenda that there is a policy that is followed that is equitable for all our municipal workers, so that they can come back to work. I have worked with many of the city employees from many different agencies to help them get back to work. We worked with the Law Department, and we oftentimes could not find an answer as to why some were being brought back and some weren't. And we were given a complete runaround. And imagine, we sitting here as the minority leader stated, we're the policymakers, yet there was no policy. So that is why we sit here today. We are not, this is not a mandate bill, this is not an anti-vaccine bill. This is a resolution for municipal employees to receive the same equity as others did, to get back to work, back to their jobs, back to providing for their families, back to teaching our children, back to being able to work for sanitation and for the DOT and for the Fire Department and for Police Department and any other municipal office and agency, when we know that there is a reduced head count and there is no one to, to fill those, those positions. We need this, this resolution to pass, and we need Albany to do their job and pass the legislation at hand. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much to you both for your statements and your continued advocacy on this issue as well. We will now hear testimony from representatives of O L R, and I now turn to the committee council to administer the oath for this panel of administration officials, including individuals from DCAST, who are present in the room for Q and A.
Good afternoon. We will now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I'll administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. I will read the affirmation once and then call on you, each of you individually to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. First Deputy Commissioner Pollak, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Delarosa and members of the Civil Service Committee, Civil Service and Labor Committee. I'm Daniel Pollak, First Deputy Commissioner at the Office of Labor Relations, and I thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm here with Georgette Deslee, Director of City Employee Benefits Program, Claire Camerata, the Director of the City Employee Assistance Program, and for Q and A, Claire Levitt, Deputy Commissioner for Health Strategy, and Katrina Porter, Deputy Commissioner for Human Capital at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. I will first provide an overview of the benefits O L R administers, then turn it over to my colleagues to provide greater detail, particularly regarding the Management Benefits Fund, Flexible Spending Account, and Employee Assistance Program. I will conclude O L R's testimony with some observations on the legislation before the committee. The Employee Benefits Program consists of five separate programs: the Management Benefits Fund, known as MBF, the Flexible Spending Accounts Program, commonly known as FSA, the Deferred Compensation Plan, the New York City Employee Individual Retirement Account, and the Health Benefits Program. The Employee Assistance Program operates separately from Employee Benefits Program, as does Work Well NYC, the city's Workplace Wellness Program. So the largest program is our Health Benefits Program, which covers approximately 1 million active employees, pre-Medicare retirees, and their dependents, and over 200,000 Medicare-eligible retirees and dependents through our health insurance plans. The 95% of city employees who are unionized have access to additional benefits through their union welfare funds. These funds provide benefits such as dental and vision insurance, frequently prescription drug coverage, as well as other benefits. They're funded through contributions made by the city to the funds, the amount of which is negotiated through collective bargaining. Nonrepresented city employees receive additional benefits through the Management Benefit Fund, which is administered by O L R. Similar to welfare funds, MBF receives a contribution per employee and retiree similar to the amounts received by union welfare funds, and uses those funds to purchase ongoing benefits for non-unionized employees. I'll now turn it over to our Director of Employee Benefits, Georgette Deslee, to provide additional details about our employee benefit programs.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. If we can go to the next slide, please. I'd like to go over what First Deputy Commissioner Pollak just talked about as far as the Employee Benefits Program is concerned. So if you would look at that monitor, then you will see that the Health Benefits Program, the Management Benefits Fund, Flexible Spending, Deferred Comp, and the NICE IRA, the first three are listed in the order in which employees use them. So the very first thing that you use is the Health Benefits Program. If you have out-of-pocket expenses after that as a manager, then you can go to the Management Benefits Program. After paying a $500 deductible, then you get 90% of that money back. If you still have out-of-pocket medical expenses, then you go to the Flexible Spending Program, including the deductible that you just paid. So that's the order in which this is used. What is not there is the Pension Plan, which is not an Employee Benefits Program and not at O L R, but it is tied to the Health Benefits Program. In order to get retiree health benefits, you must be receiving a pension. So if you can just imagine a pension bullet there and then looping back up to the Health Benefits Program, that's how that ties in. Employee Benefits Program utilizes particularly with regard to health benefits, various ways of communicating with participants. We reach out to the agency reps on a monthly basis. We send email blasts to employees about new benefits. We have open enrollment for both Employee Benefit, the Health Benefits Program, and Flexible Spending. And there is a very, very active O L R website where participants can get all of their communication on every program. Pursue, let me continue. Pursuant to Executive Order 99 of January 3, 2007, consolidation of Health Benefits Program Assistant, the function of providing support to agency employees and the Office of Labor Relations in furtherance of the administration of the city's Health Benefits Program was centralized at DCAST, the Bureau of NICAP Central. When employees from centralized agencies have issues regarding health insurance, their first point of contact is either their human resource departments or NICAP Central, and when employees from non-centralized agencies, for example, health and hospital, have questions about their benefits, they go to their human resources as well. If you could go to the next, yes, the next slide, I would just like to talk about for a minute because it details what the responsibilities are as these agencies come together. So the Employee Benefits Program is decentralized. While O L R has primary responsibility for contracts, monitoring carriers, and so on, the actual administration in regards to direct contact with employees is decentralized. So let me go to the O L R.
Is this the right slide? Or were you talking about the one before? Can you go back one slide, please? Thank you.
Yes, that's the one. So O L R monitors the carrier's performance and claims data, administers MBF and Flexible Spending, as we said, operates the Retiree Health Benefits Enrollment and Call Center, communicates issues to HR and payroll, and advocates for all city employees and retirees with health carriers when they come to us with questions. DCAST operates active health benefits enrollments and central agencies, supports non-central agencies with health benefits inquiries, and creates new hire onboarding orientation materials. And then finally, the agency HR reps, they are the ones who distribute the benefits information and materials to employees. They provide benefit information to all new hires and to onboarding process, act as the first point of contact on questions, and bring those questions to O L R for clarification. So as I'm going through this, if you have a question, please stop me, and I'm, I'm happy to, to go further into it. Can I go through this? So let's go to the next slide. O L R is the primary point of contact for retirees, as I said, regarding the health benefits insurance. And to better serve our retirees, in 2022, we received funding to launch a dedicated call center staffed by O L R employees that now handles 85,000 phone calls. 50% of those are related to enrollment, 40% are related to Medicare Part B reimbursement, IRMA reimbursement. The remaining calls are related to retiree health coverage. And now, we're going to go on to Medicaid, to the Management Benefits Fund, and that's this slide. So First Deputy Commissioner Pollak went through these. Let me go through them again. The Management Benefits Fund includes dental, vision, long-term disability, basic life insurance, superimposed major medical, health and fitness, group universal life. There was a question, as I went through the list of benefits, I said, if you're a manager, this is where you go as a second level. Well, if you're not a manager, then you go to your union, to the welfare fund. Flexible Spending, everybody goes to, but that's the equivalent to the Management Benefits If you could go to the next slide, please. Management Benefits Fund procures its service vendors through an RFP process. So the dental vendor, the vision vendor, those are actually contractors of the fund who pay the claims, receive the claims, and have the contact with employees. It is done through an RFP process on a rotating basis, every five, contracts of five years. We have, in the last 18 months, switched out both the dental and the vision carriers because they were better carriers in the field. And in the last four years, we also went through an RFP process with the supermajor medical carrier who was rehired. The vendors are selected based on their experience, their service levels, the breadth of their networks, and their costs. The committee members of the procurement committee are those who are members of the Management Benefits Advisory Committee. And all of these service contracts have performance guarantees built into the contract, how quickly they answer calls, how quickly they pay their claims, and so on. That's all contractually specified. Just to give you an idea of numbers, if you'd go to the next slide, please. The SMMP, over the last 12 months, has processed almost 13,000 claims and answered 4,600 phone calls. That is the carrier. That is ASO. Their carrier has done that. Dental, we had 96,743. You can see that that's the primary program in the MBF, and there were 10,791 calls. Vision, dental, by the way, we just switched out, and we now are with ASO as well. Vision, total claims processed, 17,478 last year, total calls, 5,850. So, and that also has a new carrier, GVS. The Health and Fitness Reimbursement Program does not have a carrier. That is handled in-house, and you can see that the total claims processed by staff in-house last year, 6,837, and the total calls, 1,600. What did I leave out?
Let me just ask you a quick question on this. Sorry to interrupt the presentation, but the total claims processed is the number of the claims you've processed, but how many claims came in? Do you have the breakdown of that for these numbers?
They were all, they were all processed. The ones that came in were processed.
Every claim that came in has been processed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. So I do want to say, even though these are all carrier-processed claims, if a member calls us and says, I'm having a problem, or I received a letter, I don't understand what that says, and so on, then we intervene and we, we make sure that that claim either is not being paid for a good reason or does get claimed, does get paid. So that, that is the role of MBF, to intercede. The health, the Fund's Health and Fitness Reimbursement Program provides reimbursement for both active and retired members, as well as their spouses and domestic partners. You can use a fitness program, you can use city bike, yoga, any number of programs. Effective March 1 of 2024, the reimbursement has gone to $500 for each consecutive six-month period, or $1,000 a year. Last year, there were, as I said, 68,837, 1,600 calls. The Flexible Spending Program, which is the next slide that we're going to go to, consists of two spending accounts. So what happens is a participant decides to enroll in one of these programs during the open enrollment period, which is in the fall. It's always for the following January 1, and there is an open enrollment every year. These are, the participant is signing up for a single year and then has to re-enroll. There are two kinds. There is the HC FSA program, which has 4,700 participants, and there is the DCAST program, which has 1,500. HC FSA- H C F S A, as I said, is the flexible spending program, which is a third level, the last payer, for whatever is left over after the health benefits and after the union or M B F has paid. Whatever is left over, you can bring here. The D C A P program is for childcare expenses. The participation is very low, as you can see, and that is because if they don't join this program, people can take exactly the same credit on their tax return at the end of the year. So, the only benefit here is that you get the money a little bit sooner, but the benefit exists even without this program. The way that the, the claims are processed... Is that the next slide? I'm sorry, I didn't go through these numbers. So, in the H C F S A program last year, there were a total of 28,059 claims processed. There were 18,500 phone calls handled and 6,500 emails responded to. The way that the claims are processed is that if we receive a claim by the 25th of the month, that claim is paid in the following month, the last week of that month. So, it is, it is batched and paid on a monthly basis. That's the process. What you have here is the way that people can submit their claims through the LEAP file. Again, this LEAP file was put in during the COVID time. Before that, people just sent us mail. All of that went away, the whole world, not just the city of New York, but the whole world went electronic in communication. You started to communicate with your bank electronically and everybody else. We try to communicate the same way. Participants submit their forms here. They get an immediate confirmation saying that we have received their claims as soon as they submit those. Then, participants receive confirmation of their claims once the claims are processed. They receive quarterly statements, and they receive annual statements. The rules that govern these two programs are all Internal Revenue Service, they are under Section 125 of the Internal Revenue Code. The minimums and maximums are set by that. The way that claims are processed are set by that. Specifically within H C F S A, and I know that this is something that comes up again and again, people don't like this. In order to be reimbursed in H C F S A, you must show documentation of the fact that you have out-of-pocket costs. You have to show the original bill, you have to show what the healthcare carrier paid, you have to show what your secondary carrier paid. Once we have that information, we can process. It's a lot of paperwork. People don't like to fill it out. It's not our rule, it's the I R S rule. Just to talk a little bit about our website. Most participants and most employees get information from the website. We make sure that website not only is current, but is very user-friendly. We especially are proud of our videos, I have to say, because we try to make them entertaining, we try to make them animated, we try to engage people, we try to keep them short. There are multiple web, web videos about the flexible spending program. If you go out and click on one, then you will see it. There are worksheets, there are calculators, all are there on the website to help individuals calculate their annual expenses and their potential S A C savings, so that when they are joining these programs, there is not a surprise at the end. And finally, if I could ask for the last slide. Moving forward, we talked about that. Next slide, please. So, these are projects and improvements that I wanted to talk about. We are working on an F S A portal. We understand that participants want to see what their balance is, what has been paid, what hasn't been paid, and so on. They want to see their claim. In the early part of 2025, that portal will exist. Participants will be able to check all of that directly. That's what we're working on right now. We are continuing to maintain a schedule of onsite agency presentations, both for F S A and for M B F. As a matter of fact, the city council presentation from both M B F and F S A are scheduled for September for the H R and payroll. We are developing webinars for both programs. And finally, because I talked about changes that have taken place in the programs, and the programs have been brought up to market level, both in the dental and the vision, we are mailing out a mini M B F booklet in the fall, very soon, to all M B F members so that they will have all the updated information at their fingertips. Thank you. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Claire Camerata.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to share more about the New York City employees.
You have to press the button. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Claire Camerata, and I have been the Director of E A P since 2021. The City of New York recognizes that experiences of mental, behavioral, emotional, and social problems have a serious impact on the health, employment, welfare, and social life of the individual, the individual's family, coworkers, and the community. Excuse me. With this in mind, Executive Order 46 was issued in 1992, establishing municipal E A Ps to address these issues that New York City employees may face and to provide support and counseling to assist them in seeking help and recovery. New York City has an extensive network of agency and union-based E A Ps providing services to all city employees. Each, each E A P offers distinct services based on employees' needs, but all the programs work in concert with one another to best serve all employees. The New York City Office of Labor Relations Employee Assistance Program, the largest of all New York City's E A Ps, currently provides services to New York City non-uniform mayoral agencies, New York City Housing Authority, New York City Health and Hospitals, and the Department of Correction. And then, in early 2020, the E A P extended its program to the New York City Department of Education, which led to an expansion of the program, the E A P program, and increased staff by over 50%. Approximately 325,000 city government employees and their family members are eligible for New York City E A P services. While our program only formally serves those entities I just mentioned, E A P never turns down a request for assistance, and we have frequently provided services to non-mayoral entities who need it, including city council. New York City O L R's E A P is designed to assist employees and their families in resolving problems that may adversely affect their personal and professional performance. New York City E A P offers counseling and assistance with a broad range of behavioral health topics. The most common concerns brought to E A P are mental health-related, such as symptoms of anxiety or depression, grief and bereavement reactions, or traumatic events. They also come in with work stress related to job demands, poor coworker relationships, or trouble with work-life balance. And then also, they may come to us with concerns for family members, such as mental health concerns or substance misuse. Other services provided by the E A P include information and referral services, case management, extensive follow-up, and insurance authorization. Short-term counseling is also available when the client and the clinician agree that the presenting issue can be addressed within a short-term model. If the client needs a referral for longer-term treatment, E A P assists in identifying a provider that accepts their insurance and also has availability. So, in general, all services are free and confidential, and all E A P services are provided by master-level mental health professionals. The N Y C E A P also offers tailored, excuse me, services for supervisors and managers to aid in their response to staff's behavioral health needs. Stress management, suicide awareness and prevention, improving communication in the workplace, these are just a few of the presentations offered to New York City agencies. Supervisory and managerial consultations, online workshops, and staff presentations are provided upon request of the agency. E A P continues to grow, reaching more clients each year. In 2023, E A P served 39% more clients as compared to 2022. That was a total of 27,000. And specific to our managerial and supervisory support, we have reached over 15% more employees in leadership roles than compared to 2022. Despite all the E A P has to offer and all the services we provide, we want to do more. We are devoted to educating employees about the program and encouraging their utilization of E A P's offerings. To consistently promote the E A P and educate the workforce about our program, we offer the following. Online and in-person presentations to review the E A P program and services at new hire orientations. And currently, we present at all Department of Health and Mental Health, New York City Health and Hospital orientations for new employees. And then recently, D C A S added an informational video that highlights the E A P program to share in their new hire orientations. We also send bi-weekly emails to agency leadership to distribute to staff, and then each of those emails includes a relevant behavioral health topic. We attend health fairs, D E I events, wellness events, and more. We provide presentations to senior management and supervisors on things like how to address staff that may benefit from E A P support. We collaborate with unions so they can provide information to their members, and our website, which is currently being updated, is going to be updated to be a bit more user-friendly. So, I and the staff at E A P are passionate about the work we do assisting city employees and are constantly working to better serve our clients. So, thank you, and I'll now turn it over back to First Deputy Commissioner Pollak.
Thank you to my colleagues for describing those programs. We, O L R, are very proud of all the benefit programs and E A P and other programs we administer to help city employees. So, I want to comment now briefly on the pieces of legislation before the council. So, Intro 265 would require city agencies to make best efforts to expedite the processing of health insurance coverage for city employees who transfer employment from one agency to another, to avoid lapses in health insurance coverage during such transfer. As mentioned during our testimony, enrollment is handled through the N I C A P system by city agencies with assistance and coordination from D C A S or through other agencies for non-N I C A P entities like H and H, N Y C Health Plus Hospitals. O L R and D C A S make best efforts collectively to improve processes and disseminate health benefits information to agencies to ensure that coverage is seamless as possible when transfers occur. For O L R's part, if we're informed of any lapse in coverage, we immediately seek to restore health benefits retroactively for the affected employees. Councilmember Joseph, I'm very sorry to hear about the experience that you had. That's never anything we want to see happen when employees are hired or moving between agencies. You know, our goal is to make sure that people have their health coverage. When we are contacted, when someone faces an issue like yours, we, you know, leap and dash and to try to rectify it, I think. So, you know, we certainly appreciate the intent behind this bill, and, you know, we'll continue to discuss it with the council.
Well, thank you for that, but that day I had to go back home and wait until you guys reinstated my health insurance in order to see the cardiologist. This was pressing for me.
I understand, and I apologize, and, you know, I, we never want to see that happen. It's definitely our goal to make sure that doesn't happen. You know, sometimes, especially when there are transfers between, you know, entities that may have different systems, like Department of Education, to, you know, an agency that's more directly administered by D C A S, you know, there could be issues, but I know we're always looking to improve the process, and we will continue to do so.
But I also wanted to note that it was also the same insurance that I had. I wasn't changing provider, I was keeping the same provider, just transferring it over to New York City Council, and there was still a delay. And even when I spoke to cardiologists to see if they would see me and then bill you later, they'd bill me later, they said no, I would have to pay upfront or not get seen that day at all, and I was not seen by the cardiologist.
So, again, I do apologize for that. I really, anyone who faces that information, you know, faces that situation, you know, as soon as we're notified about it, we will seek to rectify it. We have no interest in seeing people have that issue come up.
So, Chair, can I ask a couple of questions?
So, T 2024-2170 would establish new requirements on the processing of benefit claims, including requiring that claims be determined within 14 days of filing. O L R would also be required to create a city benefits help center, which would be responsible for offering information and guidance to employees about the bill, bill the and structure of all benefits for city employees. The bill would also require the establishment of an online portal through which city employees could submit and track their benefit claims, receive information about benefits, and communicate with benefits administrators. O L R would also be required to submit an annual report on employee utilization of such portal and basic data on claims processing. Lastly, the bill would require O L R to design and administer a one-time survey for municipal employees to provide feedback on the substance and administration of benefits. We appreciate the intent behind this bill and share the goal of improving service for our city employees, but we do have some concerns about the scope of the legislation and the resources it would require, given the complex nature of city benefits we described in our testimony. We look forward to continuing to discuss with the council ways to improve the administration of benefits for city employees. Thank you for your time, and we'll be happy to address any questions you have.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Joseph to ask first round of questions. I also want to recognize we've been joined by Councilmember Mar Marado. Thank you for being here, and then I'll come back for questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm also in B N T, so I got a city budget to keep negotiating.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know who's responsible for ensuring employees who transfer agencies do not experience a lapse in coverage?
So, I'll turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Porter from D C A S to describe that in more detail.
Hello, Councilmember Joseph.
Hi.
So, the way it works is that a transaction is processed through N I C A Ps, and the automated system will determine, you know, how the benefits will react. So, a transfer between agencies should not result in a lapse in benefits. However, when you're transferring from an agency outside of D C A S jurisdiction into an agency that's under D C A S jurisdiction, there is a communication that needs to happen between the two agencies. And so long as that happens before the transfer occurs, then the process is seamless. If that does not happen, then we would need notification from the employee and/or the agency, and that would include the submission, the submission of supporting documentation, and then we would ensure that the health benefits are transferred over accordingly.
So, I guess my agencies were not talking to each other. Does O L R, O L R, O L R track whether, and if so, how often employees experience a lapse in coverage in the event of inter-agency transfers?
We do. We do track that. We have an audit process that runs every day, and it gives us an opportunity to, you know, review exceptions or benefits that did not transfer over as a part of the automated process. And then, in a timely manner, we will reach out to the employee and/or the agency to rectify any discrepancies with employee benefits.
So, you missed me, huh? You missed me, I fell through the crack. How can this issue be addressed to ensure employees do not experience lapses in coverage?
And so, once again, we can look at our auditing procedures and ensure that we're capturing all relevant transactions. It's a, it's a bit difficult when we're dealing with the agencies that are outside of D C A S jurisdiction, but we do have contact with them, so we absolutely can work with these agencies to strengthen the process.
I would love to see that, and I don't want anyone to ever experience what I experienced. So, thank you, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Joseph. I want to ask a few more questions. First, I want to thank you for the lengthy PowerPoint and walking us through it. I want to recognize that this is a complex system, and so we're all trying to just get, you know, our bearings around the process. So, timely and accurate processing of claims for benefits is a core component of administering a functional, successful employee benefit system. Who handles the administration of various employee benefit programs offered by the city? And I guess you ran through that, right? But how does O L R assess the performance of these contracted administrators? You testified that there are performance guarantees for each administrator. Can you walk us through what those are?
I just, first, to start, you know, we can certainly provide... First, to start, you know, we can certainly provide some of them now, but we're happy to provide the full list of the guarantees. They're fairly lengthy, so we're happy to provide that to the council. You know, I think some of the performance guarantees include timely processing, answering calls, things like that.
And when you say timely processing, what is like your standard for holding this administers?
We process within ten days.
Within ten days?
They have to process within ten days.
Ten business days.
Ten business days.
Okay. What are the claims processing standards that apply to various benefits offered by city employees? And how are those standards determined?
So just to provide some more clarification to the last one, that's really the MBF contracted programs. So our dental, our vision, our superimposed major medical. You know, obviously, welfare, union welfare funds would have their own contracts and their own performance standards that, you know, we're not fully aware of. For health plans, there are regulations issued by the State Department of Financial Services that say that claims have to be processed within thirty days if submitted electronically and forty-five days if submitted by paper.
So that's how much time specifically the administrators are given to process the claims and render decisions?
That would be to process a claim on the, for a health insurer. So Emblem, for example, they would have that amount of time to do an initial processing. That could mean that the first, the processing, there needs to be more information requested. And then, so within thirty days, they request more information. Then more information is submitted, then there's another thirty days to process that.
And what about to issue a reimbursement? Is it the same kind of timeline?
No, I'm not sure about the timeline for, once you've determined that, for health insurance, once they've determined a claim is reimbursable, like now of network claim, I'm not sure the timeline for how quickly they have to make that payment. I think usually it comes with the explanation of benefits. You know, for our programs, Desley can perhaps speak to it if she can find it. If not, we'll get the information to you, as she testified for our GIM and FSA programs. If it's submitted by the twenty-fifth of the month, payment is made the last week of the following month.
But I did find the answer to your previous question, which was on one of the slides. I don't know why I didn't say it. The service performance guarantees are ninety-seven percent of claims must be processed within ten days, and ninety-nine percent of calls must be answered within thirty seconds. So they're very stringent, and we monitor them.
How does OLR ensure that benefits processing standards are met? Obviously, you track, but does OLR track the timeliness of claims determinations or audit claims for erroneous determinations?
We do. We get quarterly reports from all of the vendors, and we review those. On a quarterly basis, we discuss it with each of them. We discuss all of these. And as I said, what we do regularly is go out to the market and we bid. And if we hear that service levels are not where they should be, we switch out the vendor, which is exactly what happened with Dental and Vision.
Well, that was my next question. Can you describe an instance when OLR had to take action to enforce an administrative standard or improve substandard benefit administration?
That's exactly what we did. We started to get complaints about Davis Vision. We started to get complaints about HealthPlex. And we were going out to bid, and that was part of the process that we went through, is that we took those complaints into consideration.
In your experience, what is the most effective way to ensure that claims for benefits are processed within a prescribed timeframe?
I was trying to answer that. So you're asking about how we would ensure, the most effective way to ensure that claims are processed? So I think, you know, as Director Desley mentioned, we do receive these reports, you know, staying in touch with the carriers and also hearing from, you know, non-represented city employees. You know, we all, in our jobs, deal with employees a lot. And, you know, we do hear concerns about, you know, if people submit things and they're not hearing back, if people are unhappy about certain aspects of a benefit. And, you know, then we can, we can address those with the vendor. And I think also the RFP process really allows us to evaluate kind of the best vendors who can provide superior service, maybe to the ones that we had previously.
I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Ariola because she's waiting to ask questions, and then I'll come back to ask some more technical questions.
Thank you, Chair. This is for DCAST. So how did the idea of city workers waiving their civil rights come about?
I'm sorry, can you please ask that question again?
Sure. How did the idea of the city workers waiving their civil rights come about? And how was it decided who would be asked to sign the waiver and not, once the agencies determined, you know, that there was no longer going to be a vaccine mandate because it was lifted?
So I'm going to defer the question to OLR.
Okay.
So under civil service rules, when competitive class employees are to be reinstated, there's a requirement that they sign a waiver of their, of certain claims. So it came from, you know, civil service rules.
So every member would have had to have signed that waiver according to your rules?
The rule was that competitive and labor class employees are required to sign waivers. You know, whether every agency complied with that, I can't say. But that was the guidance given to agencies.
So can you explain why some members were asked to sign waivers and others who were similarly situated were not asked to sign waivers?
I certainly don't know every individual case. You know, as I said, for competitive class and labor class employees, the guidance was that they should sign a waiver.
Was a protocol given to the agencies regarding reinstatement for the members who had been separated from the city service during the COVID mandate and once it was taken away?
Yes, there was an FAQ prepared by DCAST and sent to agencies.
Yeah, so I don't exactly agree with the answer you gave before that because there were so many similarly situated members, and some were asked to sign a waiver and had an active Article 78, and some also had an active Article 78 and were put back in, you know, without a waiver. And they were exactly the same. And that's what we've been fighting each and every day with the Law Department, with OLR, with DCAST, and trying to find out why, why there is inequity across the board and why there isn't a policy. And perhaps there's a policy now, but there wasn't a policy then. So is there a policy now?
Yes, as I mentioned, there was a policy issue. There was an FAQ issued to agencies with guidance about how to handle it. Happy to provide it to the council. That was issued shortly after the mandate was lifted, and it was provided to all agencies.
Okay, and when was that policy provided?
I'd have to look exactly, but I believe it was in February of '23, after the mandate was lifted.
Do you know how many cases Article 78s have been won by the workers, city workers?
I do not.
You don't? So then you wouldn't know how many of them were appealed either?
No, I do not.
So I would like to know the answer to those two questions. If you could get back to the Chair.
I think you can.
Because it's very important for everyone to understand that there was no real protocol. People were being brought back on the job and were the exact same situation as another firefighter, another teacher, another DOT worker, another DSNY worker, another any municipal worker. And some were hired back and some weren't. And they were told that they had to either sign a waiver or they had to drop their Article 78. Some even won their Article 78 and were brought back on. So I don't, I don't think that OLR was, really did have a protocol in place. Because if they did, then that wouldn't have been happening. There wouldn't have been such a disconnect and such inequity when members were trying to get back on. Did the Law Department, do you know if the Law Department tried each case or if the outside firm tried the cases for the Article 78s? Do you know if that's?
I'm not aware of the Law Department, how they handled it, no.
Okay. So perhaps we can, we can send a letter to the Law Department to find that out. Because I cannot imagine how many taxpayer dollars, how much money in taxpayer dollars was spent to keep our first responders, our educators, and our essential workers off the job when we needed the most to come back to the job once the mandate was lifted. And we're not going to stop asking these questions, and we're going to make sure that a policy is put in place. We're not going to stop asking these questions until each and every one of those members who deserve to come back are reinstated the way they should be reinstated, the way their colleagues were reinstated. And there shouldn't be a double standard. Thank you, thank you for the time.
My pleasure. Okay, so Councilmember Ariola led us into questions about legislation. So I'm going to ask you some questions regarding my pre-considered introduction in relation to the administration of certain municipal employee benefits. Would impose a minimum standard on certain claims and benefits processed, whereas federal or state standards do not control. Additionally, it would require claims tracking for benefits that do not currently offer online tracking, which include the health and fitness reimbursement and the FSA program. Does OLR offer a mechanism through which employees can voice complaints or submit inquiries about benefit administration? If so, what are the most common questions and concerns that OLR receives?
Yes, we do have a mechanism. I can turn it over to Director Desley to speak more about that.
So there are a number of ways that people can contact us. They can call us. There's a telephone number for each of the programs. They can send us an email. If you go to the OLR website, it specifically says, "Contact us." You can send an email just by clicking there, and it comes to us directly. You can use the mail. We are under an obligation for a very long time by the mayor's office to respond to all communication within ten days. We try to respond much faster. The majority of issues that we hear, as I said at the beginning, are not issues that we can actually change. People say, "Why is the gym benefit, the fitness benefit taxable?" Because it is, because that's the way the code is written. There's nothing we can do. People submit claims, for example, for HCFASA, which are for the prior year. We can't process them this year if it's for the prior year. That's a complaint. People say, "My doctor doesn't want to give me an EOB." We say, "But we can't process without an EOB. You must talk to your doctor and get an EOB." These are complaints, but they're not complaints that we can do anything about because they're part or parcel of these programs. It is incredibly rare that we hear somebody, and I can tell you, we painstakingly went back to all of last year for both MBF and flexible spending to see how many financial errors we had actually made. Five in the two programs in a twelve-month period. It is exceedingly rare that we do that. We have checks and balances in place. So those kinds of things that people come to us about are really not things that we can do anything about. The one thing that we can is that people say, "I want to know my balances. I want to know when my claim is." And that's the portal that we are building.
And I would just add, another way that complaints often come to us, when they happen, is through unions. You know, obviously, we have relationships with all our unions, and they'll contact us on behalf of a member who has an issue. You know, we'll also obviously hear from agencies directly. They'll contact someone at OLR who they know with the issues that one of their employees is having. And even occasionally, you know, from council staff about a constituent who's having issues. And when we get those concerns, we try to respond as quickly as we can.
How long is a typical contract duration between the city and a benefit administrator or provider?
They have five-year contracts.
Five years. Would you consider including a new element in a future contract that would require providers to offer users a more streamlined and modernized means of submitting and tracking claims and methods to contact administrators with questions?
So I think anytime we are doing a new contract, we are definitely happy to consider any improvements. So yes, we consider any and all improvements to improve the experience for employees when we have a new contract.
In regards to the performance guarantees that you discussed earlier, are those, are those contract terms made available to the public?
Our contracts are, you know, we can provide them when they're entered into. I believe they are posted on the OLR website when we enter into a new contract. So they should be publicly available. Okay, we'll have to get back to you on that. I'm looking at our chief contracting officer back there, and we'll get back to you with the answer on that. And maybe it's different for MBF as opposed to a normal city contract.
All right. This bill contemplates the potential to improve the administration of benefits under OLR's oversight power by increasing their role and offering help to individuals who are encountering challenges with claiming their benefits. If OLR is unable to directly answer an employee's question, what leverage do you think it would offer an individual employee if they, if they were to have OLR advocate, an OLR advocate assisting them with interacting with the providers? Do you think that it would serve an additional oversight on the insurance provider, successful administration of the benefits, and therefore increase the likelihood that the provider would complete their assigned functions more thoroughly and effectively?
So I will say that when, first of all, you know, when issues are brought to us, in many ways I mentioned, we will always try to reach out to a carrier to help resolve them, especially when they're urgent, pressing health issues. You know, I think the, one of the challenges with, you know, what you described is just the resources it would require. You know, as we mentioned, benefits in cities is really complex. You have, we have more than ten different health plans. We have sixty-two welfare funds providing all these various benefits, all of them with different carriers. There are other union funds for annuity, legal benefits, education benefits. And most of these things are handled by vendors. And our contracts essentially pay them to administer the programs and to, you know, have a whole staff who would have to be trained and, you know, really have an intimate knowledge of how health claims work. You know, they have to learn the procedure codes. No one at OLR right now knows all those, you know, various procedure codes for health insurance. No one knows the ins and outs. That's really what the health carriers are for. It would require a tremendous amount of resources, and I think that's a concern for us.
I understand the challenges. And I'm not saying that the challenges are small in any way. I'm not minimizing the challenges. But we continue to hear from city workers, and we know, we can acknowledge, I mean, how the complexities of this system. So this bill is looking to really streamline and help people learn how to navigate systems that are so complex and so foreign for the majority of city workers. And while the challenges and the resources are needed, I think the council serves as a partner to try to make sure that the resources are in place. But only because there are challenges doesn't mean that it's not worth exploring as a mechanism for us to streamline these processes. As you heard from Councilmember Joseph, and that is, you know, a story that we hear, and I'm sure you all hear a hundred times a day, there are some city workers that have some serious medical issues, their dependents, their spouses. And one of the benefits of working for the city has always been the benefits that come with working for the city, the stability of working for the city. And if we're not making inroads into systems that are so complex that they no longer make sense, then we are going to continue to see the retention of top talent in our city continue to flee. I mean, we've been here in other hearings when we're talking about the vacancy rates across city agencies. These things are correlated, and these things are connected. If people feel like, you know, that one thing that always drew people to city service, which was their benefits, their stability for their families, is no longer intact, then they won't work for the city. They'll go work in a private company somewhere where they'll get a 501, 401K and forget about it, right? So we need to continue to improve. And I'm, and I am glad that you all brought the data that you did bring because it sheds some light to the real, really the effort that you're trying to make in getting these claims processed and making sure that we're moving things forward. But when we put forward legislation, we're putting forward legislation because the voices of our constituencies are reflected in the issues that we're seeing here. And so, you know, I appreciate your efforts. We're going to keep asking a few more questions. I want to see if any of my colleagues had additional questions? Okay. I wanted to ask a little bit about education and outreach to employees. Obviously, understanding health insurance benefits and supplemental benefits, particularly when they're interrelated, can be a daunting task. What efforts does OLR make to ensure that employees understand the benefits available to them and how to realize those benefits?
Thank you for the question. First, just going back to your earlier statement, you know, I just want to say, I completely understand the frustration that people often feel when dealing with health insurance companies. You know, I know it can be a frustrating process dealing with claims. We are definitely prepared to, you know, continue working with the council to figure out how we can improve things for the employees, you know. I think unfortunately, you know, the system we live in, we all have health insurance companies to deal with, and it can be frustrating. But we want to make things as best we can for the employees within that system as possible. So we definitely want to continue working with you. In terms of outreach and education, generally, agency HR departments are the primary source of information. We are constantly communicating with HR departments at the agencies. We often appear at the Agency Personnel Officer Monthly Meeting that DCAST hosts to present on either new benefits or as a reminder of benefits, current benefits available to employees. We obviously also provide information through our website, and then there are the other. We obviously also provide information through our website, and then there are the other efforts that we spoke about in our testimony, mailing a mini booklet out starting this year. And, you know, when we, especially when we introduce a new benefit, we really make an effort to ensure that we are communicating both directly to members as well as, you know, through the agencies. Because one thing I find is that sadly, a lot of people will kind of ignore an email that's just from a central email account, but if it's from your agency HR, you know, people probably take it more seriously and read it. So we do work with those agencies to make sure they're communicating out to their employees.
So going into questions about pension and retiree health insurance. Health insurance for certain retirees is a major benefit of employment, especially non-union employees are not, they're, are not aware of. What are the various ways a former employee can qualify as a city retiree for purposes of enrolling in a city retiree health insurance plan?
So that is governed by the administrative code, and there are a few different categories. For anyone hired before 2001, you need five years of city service. For anyone hired after 2001, you need 10 years, except for certain teacher titles that need 15 years of service. And the other requirement is that you have to be receiving a pension to qualify for health benefits. So if you're retired and you meet those service thresholds, once you start receiving your pension, you can also start receiving retiree health benefits.
Is the information about the benefits and the methods by which it can be obtained communicated to all new employees at the beginning of their career with the city?
So I know it's certainly contained in our summary plan description. I'm not sure if every agency provides that to their employees. Is there any information we provide to agencies to include?
Yes, we do, and we actually have pre-retirement seminars where we talk to people about the steps that they have to take in order to retire and where the union, that the pension is their first stop and coming to O L R is their second stop and going to the union is their third stop, and it is very popular and a lot of people come.
Is the necessity to participate, of participation in a pension plan in order to take advantage of retiree health insurance communicated to employees when they make decisions about whether to enroll in the pension or alternate retirement plan?
So they do, they do come to us because we also administer the deferred compensation plan. So those people who are not choosing to go into the pension can go, can, there is a program called V D C that they can go into. There is also the alternative of putting seven and a half percent of your income into, into the deferred compensation plan so that you don't, you don't have to go into the pension. All of that is spelled out to employees, yes. All of it is on the website in great detail.
And, you know, obviously, we can't speak to what every single agency does, but we will, you know, make an effort to ensure the agencies are aware of that and communicating it.
These programs provide important support to current and former city employees and strengthen the city's ability to attract new hires. Additionally, the committee is concerned that employees do not receive adequate instruction and information about these programs. How many employees participated in the superimposed major medical program last year?
I think for S M M P, we have claims numbers, but we don't have unique individuals. We can see if we can get that information. I believe it was about 13,000 claims last year.
S M M P?
Yes.
13,000?
13,000.
Okay.
So let me just talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
It sounds low, 13,000 sounds low, and we talk all the time in the office about why that number is as low as it is because people don't have $500 out-of-pocket medical expenses. An awful lot of city employees don't. They go to their in-network providers. They pay $20 or $30 as a copay. They never come up to the $500. Then they never can take advantage. This is, S M M P is very much a catastrophic benefit, and that's why it's there.
So following up on that question, then, what qualifies as substantial out-of-pocket medical expenses? Is it like a surgery or prescriptions that are highly costly?
You have claims that are over $500.
Mm-hmm.
Then you're going to be reimbursed for 90% of what is out of pocket.
It's often when someone goes out of network. I would say that's the most common reason someone would submit for reimbursement if they've gone to an out-of-network provider, and then they get some form of reimbursement through their health insurance, the primary health insurance, and then for the kind of remaining out-of-pocket expense would come back to S M M P.
And just to show how catastrophic this is, if somebody has more than $2,500 out of pocket, they're reimbursed 100%. So that's really what it's there for. It's less for the copays and things like that.
Are, are description of benefit programs provided in any other non-English languages?
The prescription drugs?
Any, any of the programs. Are they provided, the information provided?
Prescription drugs are in the management benefits fund for managers. They have to buy the high option rider, and if they buy the high option rider, then they can bring whatever is out of pocket to S M M P.
Yeah, the question was more about language access. So are, is this information provided to employees in other languages that are not English?
Oh, in other languages?
Languages, yes.
Uh, both?
No, they are not.
That's something we'll definitely look into, though. That's, thank you for, thank you for raising that. That's something we'll definitely look into to understand the concern.
Yes, I've often said, you know, I was born in the Dominican Republic, my brain thinks in Spanish, and I have to translate everything before it comes out of my mouth. Sometimes it comes out in Spanish, especially when I'm cursing. Okay, so health and fitness reimbursement, as of March 1st, 2024, the management benefit funds and health fitness reimbursement increased from 250 to 500 for each six-months period. How did O L R determine this increase, and what is the average cost of gym memberships in New York City?
So, you know, based on just preliminary internet research, I would say the average cost looks like it's probably around $1,000 a year, you know, in the neighborhood of, you know, $90 or $100 a month. I don't have, you know, a study on that, but that's some, that's some information we found online. When we decided to increase the reimbursement, you know, we had heard from a number of managers over the years that they felt that $500 was low, that wasn't sufficient to essentially pay for a full year's membership to a lot of places. So, you know, we took that into account. We looked at the state of the M B F's finances, and we determined that we had, you know, enough money, enough revenue, revenue versus expenses that we could accommodate that increase.
So it's $500 for a six-month period?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I would still say that that's low. A lot of, you know, the gym memberships in the city are very pricey and, you know, even for non-luxury chains, so, you know, but I understand that it's a revenue question. Did O L R perform employee outreach before determining the increase, and how often are reimbursement amounts reconsidered?
So we didn't do any formal outreach. As I mentioned, it was something that we heard over and over, over the years, the kind of what people felt was a low amount for that reimbursement. So, you know, we felt like there's strong support out there for it, and there's no frequency, set frequency at which we reconsider. You know, it all depends on kind of what we're hearing as well as the state of the M B F's finances. You know, if we have, if we're seeing that our revenue is above our expenses year over year, then we'll consider, you know, increasing a benefit. But if there's not room to do that, then we don't really have the opportunity to.
Okay. One question we often hear about is the commuter benefits and the option of adopting to the new Omni system, and what will be the registration process for employees who are seeking to utilize this benefit?
So I would have to confer with the Financial Information Services Agency Payroll Administration and get back to you on that. I'm not sure about the current status of that.
Okay. This is an urgent one because, as you know, the M T A has pretty much already turned everything into the Omni system. And so we wouldn't want people's benefits to just be sitting there, not being able to be used in this transition.
Yep, yeah. FISA O P A does manage the contract with either Red or commuter benefits providers, so we'll check with them and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. All right, I think we're good. Thank you so much for being here and testifying today on these important programs. I know that there are some outstanding questions. We'll be sure to get some answers back for committee members and continue the conversation, but thank you for coming today and spending some time with us.
Thank you, Chair Ariola.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. I now open the floor for public testimony. Before we begin, I want to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing and you haven't done so, please fill out an appearance card with a sergeant-at-arms and wait for your name to be called. Once you have been recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic of the administration of city benefits for current employees. If you have a witness statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of the testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 42 hours of the hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. When you hear your name, please come up to the witness panel. For our first panel, we will invite Jude Pierre, Sal Maeta, Jack Lynn, and Tom Lapola. All right, you may identify yourself for the record and begin your testimony.
Hello, my name is Jude Pierre. Thank you for having me. I am a New York City firefighter. I was reinstated to the department after the COVID-19 mandate was lifted. We were told to send an email to the fire commissioner and chief of personnel stating that we would like to return to our jobs. I received the email back from the chief of personnel with paperwork to fill out, which I did, and sent back to him. I received the email back telling me to make an appointment with the medical office. There were long stretches in between the emails from the personnel where, and when I didn't hear back, I reached out to Councilwoman Ariola's office, which intervened along the way. After my medical appointment, I was given retraining dates and was back to work. Knowing that my brothers and sisters were still fighting to return to work, I kept in touch with the councilwoman's office. I knew there were firefighters in the exact same position as me that weren't being allowed back to their jobs. My return wasn't an easy one. After being out of work for months, I was finally able to return to the firehouse in the community where I served, only to be pulled off the job yet again and told to report to F D N Y headquarters, where I was told I must sign the waiver, I must sign the waiver of my civil rights in order to be back in the firehouse. Yet again, the councilwoman's office intervened, and I was able to go back to the job that I love. The other members of the F D N Y and all the other city constituencies want the same. They want to work for the city that they love and the residents that they wish to serve. I ask that you that you all vote yes for Resolution 5, calling for equity for all city workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sal Maeta. As of January of 2022, I was a 16-year vet with the F D N Y. The very next month, along with 1,700 other brothers and sisters serving the city of New York in different capacities, were terminated by the city we faithfully love. A year later, on February of 2023, Mayor Eric Adams rescinded the vaccine mandate. It was through grassroots organizations like Bravest for Choice that we were informed and instructed on how to apply to be reinstated. Within two days of receiving said instruction, I emailed F D N Y Chief of Personnel respectfully requesting I be afforded the opportunity to resume serving the people of our city as a member of the department. Months passed before finally receiving official reinstatement forms, of which I promptly completed, notarized, and submitted on two separate occasions as instructed by the F D N Y. Yet I sit, I sit here today still awaiting the call to report for duty. Thankfully, there are brothers and sisters similarly situated who have been justly reinstated without having to sign off on concessions as a condition to returning to work, as our brother Jude Pierre gave testimony to. The blatant double standard witnessed in New York City's reinstatement process amounts to a caste-like system marginalizing a segment of society as second-class citizens. The city council prides itself on advocating for equality, and rightly so. We therefore respectfully and humbly ask you to support Resolution 5. This bill does not bestow special rights on individuals, but only what is inherently right and just. We thank you for your time, and may God bless us and keep us.
Thank you so much.
My name is Jack Wei Lin. I was an E M T with the F D N Y for over 14 years. I'm here representing former F D N Y EMS workers fired over non-compliance with the COVID vaccine mandate. After the public sector mandate was lifted in February 2023, there was a lack of communication and protocol regarding reinstatement. I wasn't informed by mail or phone call or email informing me of the process to come back. In June 2023, within one year of being fired, I initiated contact with the fire department to inquire about the reinstatement process. My three email requests for more information went unanswered for six weeks until Councilwoman Ariola's office intervened on my behalf. Finally, I received an email response in late July 2023. I was sent a D-CAS waiver asking me to surrender my right to sue just for the possibility of maybe getting my job back. Other members were reinstated, no waivers required. Even retirees could return without signing away their legal rights. The double standard is clear and unacceptable. I ask you today, the city claims no wrongdoing. If the city claims no wrongdoing, why must I forfeit my right to sue in order to reclaim a position I should have never lost? And if wrongs were committed, why am I still being penalized while others are being made whole? Reapplying as a rookie E M T after 14 years of dedicated service was and still is a condition I'm unwilling to make. With Resolution 5, you guys can right this wrong, vote to reinstate every worker terminated under the mandate, send a message that New York values its public servants. We served this city courageously for years. Now it's time for you to have our backs. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Tom Lapola. This is going to be my third time giving testimony here in this iconic building, and to be honest, I'm getting tired of addressing this issue, but I'm grateful to those on this committee who have been very supportive of the fired New York City workers. Some of them are here today giving testimony. As someone who was forced to retire from the fire department after 38 years of dedicated service by Bill de Blasio and Dan Nigro for not taking the shot, I believe I have as much standing as anyone to give testimony today. I'll be brief, but I'm going to quote a fellow civil servant who was also forced to retire as well, my friend John. Americans refuse to take the COVID-19 vaccine mandate, vaccine at a higher price than those that created and released COVID-19. That overwhelmingly majority of Americans are okay with that. Let that sink in. But today, I'm here to support those who lost their livelihoods because of that unjust mandate, those who stood up for first principles and medical freedom. You know what Anthony Fauci tyrannically referred to as ideological bull sugar, right? And they have still yet to be rehired. You all know what the mandate was never about health science, had always everything to do about political science, but more importantly, political power. It's time to make those fired members of the New York City workforce whole again, and by supporting Resolution Number 5, that's the first step. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for this first panel. I open up for questions from my colleagues, if any. Councilmember Ariola?
Firefighter Maeta, thank you so much for coming in today. So if I understood...
So if I understood your testimony correctly, the Law Department stated that you could not return without a waiver because you were a complainant and had an active lawsuit. Is that correct?
Actually, they never gave me any reason why I had to sign the waiver. The only time they made reference to the waiver was when they told me that they were not able to process my reinstatement applications if I did not sign it.
So but at that point, were you on a lawsuit as a complainant with several other members of the department who were still active at the time you requested your reinstatement?
Yes.
Firefighter Pierre, I know that your road back to your job was not an easy one, and that you were treated poorly while you were getting reinstated. And I apologize for that.
Thank you.
But you were also named on that same lawsuit as a complainant. Is that correct, the same as Firefighter Maida?
Yes, that's correct.
Yet, you were both named on the lawsuit, but you were not required to sign a waiver or drop your Article 78. Is that correct?
I think my Article 78 might have been denied by that point, but I was still part of the lawsuit. But when they sent me the initial paperwork to get reinstated, they didn't include the waiver.
Were you ever made to sign a waiver?
Yes, I was in the firehouse for about a week, and my officer was having trouble putting me into the payroll. He was like, you know, you basically won't be able to get paid until I put you in the payroll. So we kind of figured out what the issue was. And then I got a call saying that there was additional paperwork I needed to sign. And it said, basically, I wouldn't be able to get paid until I signed the waiver. But I was already back working in the firehouse for at least a week at that point.
So the waiver was an afterthought?
I mean, it didn't really explain to me why they decided then to give it to me, but they just said if I wanted to start, you know, continuing my service while working as a firefighter, I would need to sign it. So then, you know, I reached out to see what other opportunities I had because, you know, that would have factored into my decision to come back if I knew I had to sign the waiver.
And did you sign the waiver?
No, I did not.
And are you working actively?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Firefighter Maida, have you ever been given a reason why you were asked to sign a waiver while other members were not? Did that conversation ever arise?
No, that never came up. It was never indicated to me why that was so important for the city, for me to sign that waiver.
Was it given to you as a condition?
Yes.
And if you had filed for a vested retirement, knowing what you know about retirees not being reinstated without having to sign a waiver, would you have been asked to sign a waiver to be reinstated if you had retired?
No.
The whole point of this is to show that there is no real protocol. There is no real balance or equity. I'd like to change my questions now to EMS Lin. At the time of the mandate was ordered, a mutual aid agreement between the FDNY and the Volunteer Fire Corps was active in New York City. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
So from the time the mandate was put into place in October of 2021, where you were no longer able to do your job, members of the Volunteer Fire and Ambulance Corps throughout this city who were not mandated to get a vaccine were able to do your job. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Well, members of the FDNY panel who were responding to the same emergencies as our valued volunteer fire department were made and mandated to take a vaccine while volunteer fire department members were not. Have you been reinstated?
No, I have not.
Have you been given a reason as to why you're not reinstated?
I was told that I need to sign the de-cast waiver in order to be considered for possibly being reinstated.
Are there colleagues of yours that were reinstated without having to sign the waiver?
Yes.
Same story.
Yes.
Thank you so very much for your testimony, and thank you so much for letting everyone on this panel know why they need to sign onto Reso Five and why the state needs to pass this legislation. Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, Chair Ariola, and thank you to this first panel. The next panel will include Michael Kane, Trinidad Smith, Alfonso Ventura, Daniel Hochauer, and Marlon Bethel. And apologize if I messed up anybody's name. Just reintroduce yourselves on the record when you begin. All right, you may begin. Just identify yourself for the record one more time, and you can begin. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Hochauer. I worked for the New York City Department of Sanitation for five and a half years. I was fired for refusing to comply with the COVID-19 vaccine mandate. Just want to point out, the city council had mentioned nobody should have a lapse in their health care or experience that. Three years, I've had no health care now. When Eric Adams issued Order 62 mandating the vaccine for city workers, he added an important caveat that exempted celebrities as they generate income for New York City. I wish to apologize to Mayor Adams. I'm sorry that I'm too short to play basketball. My singing voice is best confined to my shower and not broadcasted through a loudspeaker or on a Broadway stage. I'm sorry that I avoided the open casting call for Home Alone, despite my grandmother suggesting my mom audition me so that maybe today I could have been a world-famous actor. I'm sorry that all I had to offer the city was my muscles, my only contribution picking up New York's trash and plowing its snow. Although the city does make some money on paper recycling, my job doesn't generate Broadway bucks, so I wasn't privileged enough to be given an automatic mayoral exemption from the vaccine. As smoothly as it went to terminate my employment, despite me being a member in good standing of a municipal labor union, getting back not so much. I sit here nearly three years after winning our case and being ordered back at 6:00 a.m. the next day, treading through stay after stay until the city could finally be dragged kicking and screaming into oral arguments, and I'm still not back to work. They're going to keep pushing resources into the appeals against us. Mayor Adams chooses to continue to drag this out instead of throwing in a towel, giving me what is owed to me, and letting me go back to work. Here I am begging for a bill to be voted on to support other bills that order me back to work when all this could end tomorrow with a call made to the city law office, and they get told to drop the appeals and waivers against us and just put us back already. I'm just a calloused-handed, middle-class dude, the backbone of New York. I never asked anything from the city. But until the day comes when I can finally get the call to report back to my district, I will keep coming here to testify. I will keep reminding everybody of the continued injustice being lodged against unlawfully terminated, middle-class New Yorkers who aren't asking for handouts. As I said at the last city council meeting, and I'll continue to say until it finally happens, I just want my due compensation and the damages owed to me, and I just want to go back to throwing garbage in the rain.
Thank you so much. Next panelist, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Alfonso Ventura. When the COVID-19 pandemic began, I, like another municipal worker, was pushed to work. I was working in the biggest restaurant in New York City, the school. I was working at PS8 located at Amsterdam Avenue and 68th Street. Even though I follow all kinds of recommendations in order to avoid the COVID-19, I get it, and I get immunization. That was my reason for rejecting the vaccine. I was reluctant. When the DOE knew that I rejected the vaccine, they was pushing me to sign a paper, but I was reluctant to sign any paper because it didn't make any sense. On Monday, October 4, 2021, the DOE closed me the door, and I couldn't access my job. Then, from hero and essential worker, I became right away a villain. The DOE closed me the door, but I didn't receive any letter, any email, any explain, anything that explained my status. I lost my job, my car, and anybody gave me employ because I was not vaccinated. Without a job, without money, and without unemployment insurance, I was a hero and homeless. I spent almost three fourths years in shelter. On December 22, a friend told me the DOE was reinstalling workers that had been suspended by COVID vaccine. Immediately, I called Raul Rodriguez from DC 77. He told me that I should talk to Pamela Rodriguez, DC 772. I sent her a text message on December 16, 2022. She answered it on December 22. I called her by phone and explained my situation, and her recommendation was that in order to be reinstallsing, I need to apply again, I need to apply again to the DOE. I rejected her recommendation because if I do that, I'm saying that I didn't spend more than five years previously the COVID pandemic. Looked like the DOE authority used the pandemic for get rid of guy like me. They call unsuburnated. I reject the COVID vaccine because the own coronavirus create immunity in my body. When I get COVID-19, as a parado, reject the COVID vaccine. The COVID vaccine has been more harmful for my life than coronavirus itself. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next.
I would like to start out by thanking everybody for this opportunity to share my story. I was a tenured special education teacher in the field of autism for over twenty years. My main objective here is to shine a light on how difficult the process continues to be for me and thousands of other city workers in trying to get our careers back. The city of New York and DOE failed those of us who were terminated or had resigned with a lack of outreach and guidance on reentering the workforce. We were only told to reapply as new teacher, as I did. I was cleared, and I was put in the new teacher recruiting section of the DOE's website. I had three separate interviews in August of 2023. My last interview was an in-person demo lesson in the interview with the principal in Brooklyn. Her last words to me was, "I will call you this evening to let you know what site I'm going to put you at, providing you clear HR." My immediate response to her was, "I don't know why I wouldn't be cleared, as they are the ones that cleared me to be hired." To my surprise, I did not get a call back or email or thank you for the interview, or that they were going with another candidate. Absolutely no response. That was my third interview in a row that was left like this. I understand perhaps one no call back, but three in a row is highly unlikely and unprofessional. I stopped interviewing after that, and I truly feel that HR is being instructed by the legal department not to clear me. I won my right to work in September 2023 and was ordered by Judge Ralph Parthesio to go back to work at the start of this past school year. I arrived to work with a court order in hand and was denied access to my job site and made to wait outside for hours to be told by the current principal that as per legal, I was not allowed back to work. After twenty years of service, I was humiliated and made to wait on the sidewalk. Just last week, I received an invitation from the Teacher Recruitment Center asking me to apply for summer school with a one-week deadline approaching. I would be genuinely grateful if I could work for summer school as I have done for my full twenty years straight with the DOE. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Michael Kane. I was a New York City special ed teacher for over fourteen years. I lost my job over the vaccine mandate and founded a group called Teachers for Choice. I thank you, Chairwoman De La Rosa. Thank you, everybody here, especially the minority leader. Councilwoman Ariola, you've just been heroic for us, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much to Councilwoman Joseph for being here and everybody for being here. I first just have to just note that it really struck me to hear Alfonso talk about homelessness from this. And I didn't know that. I just met Alfonso. Our friend Daniel Vila from La Voz Latina introduced us. And that's the type of loss this has had. And so when we're trying to get back, it's so important. There's two real things I want to talk about. One is that I've been involved in two major lawsuits. One is Kane versus de Blasio, that is currently in the Second Circuit Court of Appeals, paired with two other lawsuits. It's been sitting there seventeen months. And then a state lawsuit called Dicapua versus the city of New York. Trinidad is a named plaintiff along with me in both of those cases. And in the state case, we did have a victory, as Trinidad had just talked about. And we're not back to work. You know, the appeals process goes on, and it continues on. And the last thing I want to talk about is what Trinidad said, too. She's blocked. She feels she's blacklisted. And we know this is in court record, and we talked about it in city council. There are problem codes that have been placed on unvaccinated educators that have provided roadblocks. Some educators have gotten it admitted to them, and others, like Trinidad, she suspects it, but she just can't prove it. Please support Resolution Five. There's no reason for this anymore. There's no reason for an impediment. We might disagree on the past. I don't think we disagree on the future. We need to move forward. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Marlon Bethel. I'm a former NYPD detective. Contrary to the lies you've been told by the Adams administration, NYPD cops were not only forced out of their careers, but some, like myself, were terminated and today prevented from returning to work lest they waive their rights. There are members of this body that are fond of preaching the virtues of social justice and minority rights. So I ask, where is the equity that a minority, an immigrant to this country, a resident of the city, and a fifteen-year veteran cop with over two hundred arrests and citations from the NYPD and the Kings County District Attorney's Office cannot return to work unless I waive rights bestowed upon me by the laws of this nation, state, and city itself? How can we expect workers, the arm of government, to operate with fairness and equity if they are being discriminated and extorted of their own individual civil liberties? The return-to-work process has been a disjointed mess from the get-go. This is in no way an outrageous statement. The NYPD's own procedure was not detailed until a week after Eric Adams announced the cancellation of the mandate and was not distributed to former employees by the department. I myself only became aware of the change after being called by former colleagues who themselves saw the mayor's press conference and had no idea about the details as the department had sent out no notifications or emails. After making numerous calls throughout the department, I was finally able to speak to somebody who explained the procedure to me. And the procedure itself was as arbitrary as the deadline that was set for reinstatement. It glossed over a lot of minutia like back pay, return to work, return of accrued vacation time, return to prior unit, pension shortages due to the lapse in contributions. And worst of all, the procedure explicitly noted that I must sign a waiver in order for me to return. Throughout my career, I have always sought to not overstep the civil rights of other individuals, including those who don't respect our own laws. As I sit here, I can't help but wonder, why must I now give up my own? Had I simply chose fraud and dishonesty and used a fake vax card, I would have been reprimanded and still allowed to keep my job. So why is it that, having chosen honesty and actual science, I'm no longer allowed to be there unless I sacrifice my additional rights?
Mr. Bethel, can you conclude? Can you conclude, please? Thank you.
I think it's time for the council to send a message, okay, on behalf of your constituents, some of who are all in here, and we all work for the city. On behalf of your constituents, some of who are all in here, and we all work for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel, I want to open it up for questions, so please don't, don't move for one second. I know that Minority Little Buried has a question, and I believe Councilmember Joseph, minority leader.
Uh, just a question for Mr. Hulkower. Um, you, you mentioned you won a lawsuit.
Yes, Garvey et al.
Can you just explain the, the merits of the case and, and what the judge found?
So Garvey et al. was decided in October of twenty-two. It was in Article seventy-eight. Um, we basically declared the entire mandate arbitrary and capricious. The entire rollout, we were ordered back the next day at six A M., but the city was applying for a stay before the, um, the ferry reached South Street. They already had a stay going, um, and they've just been continuously staying us ever since. But basically, our case declares the entire mandate rollout arbitrary and capricious.
And the, the decision also requires that you and the other complainants be restored to work?
We were ordered back to work at six A M. the next day. But as I said, the city was, the city has been staying us for the past, like every opportunity the city gets to throw a stay at us, they'll take it. If they can throw a ten minutes extra, they'll do it.
Were all the complainant sanitation employees?
Yes, everyone was a member of the D S N Y, either eight-three-one or four-four-four.
And other employees that weren't a part of your lawsuit that was successful have been reinstated?
Not that we, we don't know actually what's going on with anybody else. Um, they've kept everything pretty much in the dock. We don't know, we only know about the sixteen of us from our group, from our lawsuit. We have found stragglers here and there from the internet and whatnot, but, uh, I don't know of anybody. I, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, because we are completely in the dock, and the city doesn't release any information about how many sanitation workers were fired, how anyone who was reinstated. We do know that people from other agencies have been, but from what I understand from sanitation, no, I don't, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, minority leader. Uh, Councilmember Joseph, followed by Councilmember Marorato.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you for your service, my fellow educators. I was an educator for two decades before I became a council member, and I'm also the education chair in New York City Council. Um, I had a couple of questions for you. How did you find out, um, you could be reinstated to your positions?
Uh, I, I found out from my lawyers and my attorneys. Uh, I didn't find out from the union or from the Department of Education.
Same, we're on the same lawsuit, so I was told by the judge that I was cleared to go to work. And he wanted me there the next day, bright and early with the kids, first day of school. And I was excited for half a second.
I can't imagine, um, serving as an educator for two decades as well. So no one did any outreach to you to let you know you could return? You had to find out through other means?
No, no, and even when I keep getting through with all these interviews to the very last step, all three interviews, they aren't even like, they're my, I, they aren't even allowed to call me back. I'm getting absolutely no, no response from them at all.
And, and just one thing I want to add to that. We found out because the mayor ended the mandate two days before we went into the Second Circuit Court of Appeals, which was very interesting timing. So I knew about that, but we didn't get any outreach. Teachers reached out to me and to teachersforchoice.org, asking us, hey, what's going on? What do we have to do? Eventually, I spoke to Beth Norton, who's the general counsel of the U F T, who told me everything. Had a forty-minute call for, I wrote it all down. I have it published on the website now, and when people ask, I send it to them. So there was, this administration has been really lacking in any form of outreach. It really seems like they just wanted to act like it didn't happen and make it go away, as opposed to admitting, okay, maybe some mistakes were made, here's how we'll fix them. It just seems like that part never happened.
Wow, um, how many of those teachers been able to be reinstated without signing a waiver? Do you know any of the educators that were reinstated?
I know some educators who were. Obviously, they're not excited to come down here and raise their hand and say their name and tell that it happened.
Of course.
And I know some who refused to go back because they're insisting on the waiver. And I know some who went back, some in tears, because they said, my spouse is going to leave me if I don't go back, so I'm going to sign this waiver. They didn't want to, but they did. So there is no uniformity to this. It has been a hodgepodge. It depends what district you're in, depends on your relationship with your principal, depends on all of these different big bureaucratic things, not a defined policy.
Off the top of your head, can you tell me how many educators altogether, just of?
Of which, which category?
Of, that was, um, out of work, that are still out of work and those that have returned. Do you have an idea?
I'm sure hundreds, if not thousands, have returned because they had to.
Right.
Many signing the waiver, maybe some not. I'm positive hundreds still want to. I'm positive of that based on the emails and stuff I get. It could be thousands, but I, I don't know for sure.
Another quick question, just for clarification. Our city is going through a shortage of special education teachers. And I know, I was an E N L coordinator before I left to join the council, so I know what shortage looks like. And this is a moment where we need shortage areas, and if you're watching anything, our preschoolers are home, about seven hundred that have no preschool education teachers. Um, and so you guys are, are needed in the city, so I hope the administration is listening and get you guys back to work.
Thank you so much for that, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Sure.
There are teachers that were found to have fake cards, and they gave them a little slap on the wrist, and they're back to work. So, I mean, it's like if they want honesty, they're not necessarily showing through example.
Teachers always want to teach, guys. We love what we do. We don't, we love it because we do it. And I miss teaching, but I'm doing, I'm here for a greater purpose. So thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marorato.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank all of you for your service. We really do appreciate it in the city, and especially you Detective Bethel. Thank you for your sixteen years in protecting our entire city. We appreciate that. Um, from listening to your testimony, it sounded like you found out from other coworkers that you could be reinstated. Um, was there any outreach done by the department to the members?
No, there was not.
Nothing at all?
There was, there was none. I had to initiate phone calls to multiple, uh, departments within the, multiple bureaus within the department.
I'm sorry to hear that. And as a retired, um, retired members of the department that were forced to retire because they did not want to comply with the mandates, were they able to return to the department without signing a waiver? And did anyone have ever explained to you why you were si- being treated differently than other retirees?
Yes, they were. No one ever explained it to me.
Sorry to hear that, and I, I hope everything works out for all of you, and I'm behind you guys. Thank you.
I want to thank this panel for your service and for continuing to come here. I've seen you at least in three other hearings, so we appreciate it, and we look forward to getting this resolution done. Thank you so much for being here and for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, our third panel is Christine Gross, Mo Olivieri, Diane Pagan, Michael Tracy, and Edmund Wallace. Thank you. And you, you may begin and just identify yourself for the record so we can keep track. Thank you.
Um, my name is Christine Gross. In September, oh, Christine Gross. Uh, in September of two thousand twenty-one, I should have been starting my twenty-first year as a teacher. Instead, I took a leave of absence because I needed the medical insurance, and then I was fired in September of two thousand twenty-two. I was certainly not informed in February of twenty-three that, by the Department of Ed or my union, that I could go back to work. Um, I heard most of this information on the news, and I didn't bother because as far as I understood, there was going to be no back pay and no being made whole. Um, and secondly, I would have to find a principal who was willing to hire me, and my principal at my school had just started that year, so I had absolutely no relationship with her. And, uh, as being somebody who has stood strong with kids for twenty-one years, I can't imagine any principal who was willing to hire me back. But anyhow, um, this should be my, the end of my twenty-fourth year of teaching, and instead, I've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I'm now collecting food stamps. I thought this was about, uh, being made whole and getting our back pay back, so I kind of prepared things that don't make, really make any sense for this now. But I did want to say that, uh, in my research on, on looking into this, I found out that, uh, you know, at the end of July of two thousand twenty-one, the city was offering a hundred dollars for people to take the vaccine. And apparently, eight hundred thousand New Yorkers took advantage of that, which, I'm not a math teacher, but that's eighty million dollars, which I can kind of now understand why they needed to fire us all if they paid eighty million dollars for people to take one dose of a vaccine when the vaccine wasn't even effective without two doses. So I am just here today to say that I would like to be made whole. I would like to go back to my career and not be six years away from when I thought I was going to retire with no money because when I should be making my twenty-two-year longevity, uh, I'm now not making anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, the committee members and those from outside the committee, to allow these members to tell their stories. Uh, my name is Michael Tracy. I'm from the Uniform Fire Officers Association, and I'm testifying quickly today to communicate our support for this resolution, which puts the politics of vaccines aside and asks for a transparent and consistent process to rehire these city employees. As you, as union representatives, when a workplace rule is passed, we have a choice. To either challenge that rule or to make sure it is fairly and equitably enforced. In this case, that sense of fairness and equity is missing from the process. In early June, when the city of Los Angeles, a city that was far more arbitrary in its enforcement of vaccine requirements, changed course and removed vaccination as a requirement of employment, it immediately provided a pathway back for these workers. We asked the more highly functioning New York City government to follow suit. I'm going to change course quickly and discuss the F S A, because I have an opportunity, and it's important to us as a labor union. Um, we talk a lot about in the labor movement, and in this committee, I know it's important to you, Chair, about affordability for city workers who have families. I can't think of any better opportunity, aside from a pay raise, to deal with this than the F S A, which includes D cap. Um, as many, and the, and the committee will know, D cap covers a lot of expenses such as camp, daycare, and other things. We implore this committee to press O L R on increasing windows for enrollment. That's very important. Electronic payment cards, which I understand might be a little distant in the future considering their discussion of the portal, Omni eligibility for transit checks, and have agency provide direct enrollment as opposed to the janky O L R system, which is very difficult for a lot of workers to manage, and that's why we don't have a high enrollment process and even a lower usage rate. So we thank the committee for looking at this issue and hope they'll press O L R in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Diane Pagean. It's been a long road to get here. We're worn out, um, excuse me. My name is Diane Pagean. I'm from Queens. I grew up in Woodside Houses. I went to DOE schools throughout my childhood. I'm a social worker, and I did a lot of financially helping people with the income that I had from the DOE, in addition to doing the job that I had at the DOE. I'm a tenured school social worker who was forced out because I declined to comply with the demand that I take a COVID shot. I was living in District Thirty-six at the time when I was forced onto DOE's unpaid leave. If myself and other city workers of all agencies had been removed from our jobs and we had been bankers or tech workers, it would have been called a scandalous brain drain, and Bloomberg News and Forbes would have been report, coming down to New York City to report on it. But we're not those things, and so no one calls it a brain drain, but that is exactly what it is. And we've been going through it now for about three years. We need Resolution Five for a couple of reasons I'm just quickly going to say. And I'm going to give an example of why the DOE is not qualified nor competent nor has any moral authority to solve this problem and why we need Resolution Five. When I, after the vaccine mandate was lifted and I tried to get, uh, and try, I tried to reapply, I was told, I was treated like I had to apply as if I were a total stranger, completely new to the city and completely new to the DOE. I will not sign away my rights. I will not sign away my rights. And I will not turn in documents that I know the DOE has every, every stitch of document that, that I would have to hand in in order to apply for another job. I insist on being, being treated with the respect that I should have garnered with my ten years of service to the city. Number two.
Can, can you please conclude?
Well, if you don't mind, this, this is an important example, and I'll do my best to get it out in two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, less than two minutes, because the entire clock is two minutes.
I'll do my best. DOE created a leave without pay category and then reneged on the only term in, in the leave without pay that the DOE itself had to honor. Why do I say this? When the DOE placed me on leave without pay in October of two thousand twenty-one, it outlined what it said were the obligations under that leave. Under their terms, my job was to be reserved for me for the duration of the leave. However, in two thousand twenty-three, I discovered that the DOE had hired a new permanent employment employee into my position. They hired her in, in November of two thousand twenty-one. So they violated the terms of their own unpaid leave. And while I was on unpaid, thinking that I was on unpaid leave, they had actually already permanently replaced me. So DOE has no moral authority to do the right thing now. An agency that conducts itself this dishonestly, like the DOE and the mayor have done, cannot be trusted to create a fair and proper reinstatement process. And I just want to say in conclusion that you might want to look around and notice that most of us here are over forty, and that is another thing that has to be discussed because that would qualify us as being protected workers. I really ask from the bottom of my heart for the, for the council to pass Resolution Five so that we can be done with all of these past injustices and move forward. All we want is to be treated with, with a certain amount of decorum and not be once again put through hoops trying to apply for jobs when we were never actually legally and properly terminated. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Mo Oliver, Mo Willie Laveri. I was in New York, I was born in New York, raised in New York, went to school in New York, and I was a New York City teacher for twenty-three years. On October two thousand twenty-one, I was put on a leave of absence without pay because I refused to take a vaccine. That's against my religious beliefs. April of two thousand twenty-two, I was reoffered my job back in exchange for vaccination, which I refused. Then February, I, uh, hired my own Article seventy-eight. Uh, unfortunately, I, I now argue some of the same points as the Garvey case, the sanitation case that, that won under George Porsio. Um, Judge Sattler ruled that my case was time barred, even though, uh, Judge Porsio, uh, had said that it wasn't. Uh, I want to also highlight that the media has been misleading the public, public about reinstatement. A lot of folks believe that the city workers are back to work. A lot of people in the city feel like the mandate's over and everyone's back to normal, which is not true. So I will not sign a waiver because, um, I won't, a waiver is a new contract. The city needs to honor the first contract before I sign a new contract, right? And I think it's important to, for, for that to be known. Um, also, I want to say that the city needs to correct a wrong that's been done to me and so many other, uh, city workers at this point in time. I think it's, it's, whatever happened during the mandate, uh, it's safe to say that the, the city made a mistake. Now it's time to correct that mistake by putting us all back to work. And also consider the fact that we are, uh, like someone like me and the rest of us, we have years of service. We're no longer able to pour into our retirement. So this, this issue is going to spiral into retirement for many of us because there's going to be, you know, we may not have enough sufficient amount of money invested in our accounts for retirement because of this issue right here. So please consider that when you also, uh, you know, when you guys advocate for Resolution Five. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Edmund David Wallace II. I am here to speak about deprivation of the First Amendment right of freedom of religion, a basic human right. I have not worked since January sixth, two thousand twenty-two because New York City do not, denied my religious exemption and my appeal for not taking the COVID shot slash bioweapon. The past thirty months have been a burden on myself and family, causing a massive amount of undue hardship. The lie travels around the world while the truth is still tying its shoelaces. Safe and effective, they said. More like not safe and not effective. It's easier to deceive someone than it is to convince them they have been deceived. Going through this process, it pokes holes in all three branches of government. How is it that my religious exemption was not accepted and yet countless? How is it that my religious exemption was not accepted and yet countless other religious exemptions were approved? I am still waiting for an explanation of which I still never received through countless emails. To Plumbers Local Union Number One and Steamfitters Local Union Number 638, at the very foundation of your core principles, it shall be first and foremost to protect your workers' rights, not go along with a globalist depopulation agenda. Ephesians 6:12, for we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, and against the worldly governors, the princes of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness, which are in high places. In conclusion, it is my immediate demand and wish and order that you restore all that has been taken from myself without due process and all others similarly situated. That includes reinstatement, back pay, and full seniority. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I don't have a question, but I do have a statement. I mean, so far, you know, everyone who has testified has a very common theme. One, no outreach to tell you that you could be reinstated. Two, no continuity in policy for that reinstatement, no compliance with the court when you were ordered and given your civil right to go back to work. And, you know, everything that you're saying here is in complete contrast to what the testimony of Daniel Pollak, the first deputy commissioner of O L R, just said under oath. So I think that's very important because we're listening to people who are on food stamps, who were, had no jobs, who are, who were living with family, who were living homelessness, all because you decided to take a stand, and you did take that stand. But I will say that, that I agree with what was said. What was then is then. What is now is now. There are no longer any mandates, and we need to get our municipal workers back on the job. And I want to thank the UFOA for coming and standing up for your members today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vareola, and thank you to this panel. Thank all of you who came here to share your thoughts, your experiences, your stories with us. If there is anyone in the chamber who wishes to speak but has not yet had the opportunity to do so, please raise your hand and fill out the appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms at the back of the room. Anyone else in the room that wishes to speak in person? Seeing no hands in the chamber, we will now shift to Zoom testimony. When your name is called, please wait until a member of our team unmutes you and the sergeant-at-arm indicates that you may begin. We will start with Anastasia Christopoulos, followed by someone named Jean. We don't have your full name, so please give that to us, followed by Krista Odeya, and then followed by Xena Wajah. I might say that wrong. Well, I'm probably saying that wrong. And Javier Vasquez. So we're going to start with Anastasia Christopoulos first, if you're on Zoom.
Time starts.
Hello, can you hear me?
We hear you, Anastasia.
Hi, my name is Anastasia Christopoulos, and I was a tenured speech pathologist working in District 75 for almost eight years, and I had worked the 2020-2021 school year in person at my school while more than 50% of my colleagues were granted medical accommodations and worked from home. I worked in person with my special needs District 75 students who didn't mask, didn't socially distance. I held their hands. I took them to speech therapy because I saw firsthand what, being on remote speech therapy with a nonverbal six-year-old child on the autism spectrum, how difficult that could be. And I went in person, even though I have a B M I over 30 and would have easily gotten a medical accommodation to work from home that year. But I worked in person, and I was happy to do so. And then I came back in September of 2021 to the threat of the vaccine mandate. I applied for religious accommodation and was denied. I was given 24 hours to appeal. I was denied, and I was placed on leave without pay. I did not sign the waiver because I did not want to waive my rights. And I felt as a tenured teacher, if you're going to fire me, then charge me with something and tell me that I'm doing something wrong and serve me with a 3020A. I was then told to reapply with the citywide panel, and I did, and I was denied again, appealed, and denied again. I was not allowed to work anywhere within the five boroughs for several months because I was not vaccinated. I was walking dogs on Rover. My family took a more than 50% pay cut, and I eventually got a position working in Nassau County, and I took a more than 40% pay cut to work there. And if I do want to go back to the DOE, I was told I would have to reapply as a brand-new employee. I would not have tenure. I would become a probationary teacher again. I would have to reapply for all my salary steps.
Time has expired, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Your time has expired. Please conclude.
Okay, and in conclusion, I hope that you all support Resolution Five and get us reinstated and made whole. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Anastasia. Up next, we have Jean. Jean, we do not have your last name, so you could please identify yourself for the record with your complete name. Thank you.
Time starts.
Hi, good afternoon. My first name is Jean, and my last name is Jean. That might have been part of the confusion. I am here to support Resolution Five. Also, I was a teacher, a veteran teacher, 17 years in the Department of Education, special education teacher. Did not get the vaccine. I attempted a religious exemption. I was denied twice, and I was put on leave without pay on October 4th. Same as my other colleagues from all city agencies, there was a lack of communication, a lack of information, a lack of outreach from union, from DOE, from city work, any city agency to help guide us in what we needed to do or what was happening to us. I was not offered any type of 3020A hearing. By October 18th, I was under so much stress from my principal calling and harassing me to see if I was coming back to work. I had to resign. Under the arbitration agreement, I was anticipating being able to collect some unemployment to be able to at least support myself until I could figure out my next steps, hoping that I would be able to get my job back in the city school system. I was a stellar employee. I never took a day off. This really was a very emotional, stressful time for me and losing a career. I not only lost a part of who I am, but I also lost 100 colleagues. I lost something that I educated myself with 30 credits above my master's degree at the highest part of my payroll, where now I'm working and piecemealing four different jobs just to make half the money. At the time when I decided to sign the waiver, I was under so much stress because I didn't know how I would support myself. Like many of my other colleagues, some of them wound up homeless. I could not see myself go in that direction. So my decision was to just sign the waiver but move forward and try to put back together pieces of my life, hoping that the mandate would be lifted and I could get my job back. When the mandate was lifted, I did attempt to reach out to several principals that I knew. No one returned my call. HR did not return my call. So I am still hearing through the grapevine the same information that all my colleagues I support and verify, that they also only heard that if you go back, you start at zero. You have to work hard to get back to where you were. You have to apply for all your salary steps. You have to find a school that could afford to hire you back, starting at the starting teacher's salary, but having to know that they pay you.
Time has expired, thank you.
17 years, you would have, you would have to try to find someone that could afford you. So anyway, please support the resolution. Bring us back to work. Give us our back pay, our tenure, our pension credits. I was supposed to retire in three years, and now I'm looking at working who knows how long, piecemealing five jobs just to make a third of the money.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and for testifying. Up next, we have Krista Odeya.
Time starts.
Hi, my name is Krista Ode, and I'm a former FDNY rescue paramedic. I was employed with FDNY since 2005, began as an EMT, and upon completion of top class, went to Station 38 in Brooklyn where I worked for three years before being accepted into medic school. I attended Paramedic Basic Nine at the EMS Academy and graduated in 2008. I worked as a paramedic at Station 58 in Brooklyn for five years, and during this time, I attended training to become a hazardous materials technician and transferred to Staten Island. In 2015, I was asked to take an offline role as the ALS coordinator for Division Five, which includes Staten Island and South Brooklyn. In 2017, I was accepted into the Rescue Medic Basic Training Class and was working as a rescue paramedic until I was terminated on March 15 of 2022. In addition to my work on an ambulance, I was a mentor in the FDNY Explorer Program since 2014. I was also trained in the Dignitary Protection Unit Counterterrorism Task Force as an EEO counselor, an EEO liaison for Division Five, and as an alternate liaison to the commissioner. In 2009 and 2021, I received pre-hospital safe commendation, and in 2015, I received Paramedic of the Year Award. I also published a call review article in FDNY EMS Pro Magazine in the June-July issue of 2016, recorded a podcast with then Chief of Staff Elizabeth Cassio for FDNY EMS Pro in March of 2018, and was interviewed in April 2020 for an insight into COVID-19 emergency responders. I have poured my heart and soul into my career with the FDNY, and I've shown exemplary dedication to my profession. Being a frontline emergency healthcare provider was a calling since childhood. Working in this field not only allowed me to fulfill my passion, but has brought about significance and purpose in my life. I truly enjoy being a paramedic and providing care for my community. I had every intention of serving the city in which I was born and raised in, where my immigrant father worked to support his family and my immigrant great-grandmother worked to support hers. I looked forward to many more years as an employee of the FDNY and as a resource to the community in which I served. When the vaccine mandates rolled out for first responders in October of 2020...
We lost, we lost your audio. Krista, we lost your audio. I don't think she can hear us.
Yeah, I don't think.
Krista, can you hear us? We lost, we lost you on the audio. I think it's a problem with her computer. She's unmuted. Oh, Krista, Krista, we lost you for a minute. Can you give your concluding statement, please?
Sure. So just to let you know that currently, at this time, after being terminated for being a paramedic, I currently work as a 911 paramedic at Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas Health in New Jersey. My religious exemption was accepted without issue. There was no panel opinions deciding whether my beliefs were valid, and I am still employed as a paramedic for Robert Wood to this day, a little over two years. It was very interesting to me that I could do the same exact job in New Jersey that I was doing in New York City. Just across the bridge, I was able to practice as a paramedic, which begs me to question what happens in the event mutual aid is requested by New York. According to the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, if I were to be deployed to assist as a paramedic in New York, I work, and I quote, "work for the agency that requested me" and would be, quote, "under the operational control of that agency." I would then be working for the very same agency that fired me because of my vaccination status. Additionally, on the EMAC website, under License and Reciprocity, it states that whenever any person holds a license certificate or other permit issued by any state evidencing the meeting of qualifications, such person shall be deemed licensed, certified, or permitted by the state requesting assistance. To clarify, I would be able to work in New York City as an unvaccinated New Jersey paramedic, but unable to work in New York City as an unvaccinated New York City paramedic. I hope this letter can put in perspective how the COVID-19 vaccine mandates destroyed the core of the city, the frontline workers. What was done to the hardworking people of New York City was and still is absolutely criminal. May I remind the council that members who lost their jobs two years ago have not been hired back, yet the city knows that in the case of mutual aid, those who aren't vaccinated...
Krista, we're going to need you to conclude. Please conclude.
I am also a named plaintiff in the KKNY F R L, the New Yorkers for Religious Liberty versus City of New York case, which is still being heard by the attorneys Nelson Madden Black, ADF, Freedom Counsel with assistance from attorneys Sudjata Gibson, Christina Martinez, and Attorney Menzel Hall. Their damage can be repaired, and there's always a time to change. Please approve Reso Five and hire back all those who have lost their freedoms and livelihood. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to remind panelists, it is two minutes. We have been very generous with time, allowing people to go over, but going over doesn't mean speaking for an additional five minutes. Please respect the rules of this chamber and of this council. Two minutes. If you go a little over, we're giving you grace to speak because this is your moment to speak, and we understand the severity of the case you're bringing forward, but not for an extra five minutes, please. So up next, we have Xena Wajah, and I'm sorry, I know I'm messing up your last name. If you could re-identify yourself and correct the record.
Time starts.
The last name is Waju. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am a, I was a New York City public school teacher for 22 years, serving in my school as the only E N L teacher for a school that had high population of English new language learners, as well as an alternative school that serves young people who are returning to school. I was removed from my position and placed on a leave without pay in October 2021. Some of the impacts of that, because it was extended through my, to me, kind of run-around exemption appeals process, which lasted for six months. As a part of that LWOP status, I was restricted from seeking gainful employment elsewhere. I was also restricted from seeking unemployment benefits and from seeking food and nutrition benefits, which were needed in my household, as I was the sole income provider in my home. Some long-term effects have been since the termination that happened in the spring of 2022. Depletion of my savings during the leave without pay period, where I had no other resources except what I had saved, being significantly reduced in terms of my retirement income, which I was told when I pursued an appointment with the retirement specialist, who also told me to just take the shot and go back, and then I wouldn't have a problem. That I will not be able to recover that because that time was not pensionable, and I have not been paying into the system. And I also haven't achieved, hadn't achieved the age or the service time required in order for me to retire at the time that I was supposed to. Also, that, you know, I was also denied unemployment benefits again after I was approved by New York State Department of Labor. The city, my employer stepped in and created a story to say that I was not eligible, and so those benefits were cut off, and I have been making my way, navigating on my own. Again, I supported myself and my own household, but also I have always been a support to my extended family through the stability of my job and through the resources that I was able to get through there, and that has stopped.
Your time has expired, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Xavier Vasquez.
Time starts.
Hi. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I served tours in Iraq, was motivated after the devastating things that happened in 9/11. I was terminated in 2022 for my religious beliefs. My religious exemption got denied. I also practiced my right to not disclose if I was vaccinated or not, which I never, sorry, I never did. I did comply with the weekly testing despite of that because I was coerced to do that or have to be escorted outside of the building. I lost a secure, a secure job that I trusted after I joined the Marine Corps. I did get my social degree. I didn't continue because I trusted the city to keep me employed. I've been impacted by the termination. My family has struggled to eat, to keep the utilities on. We've had to sell our house, get rid of our animals. That's even including farm animals because I had a dream home. I was happy to be in the FDNY. I support the Reso Five for us to go back to our jobs, but in the same time, I would like to feel some security that once we go back to our jobs, that we have the option of retiring because of the stigma that's been created. The division has been prejudiced that worthy unvaccinated has caused a little bit of a stir at the division, is what I would say, and I don't really trust the city anymore that I fought for overseas. I honestly feel betrayed, and I almost lost my family because of the emotional... I honestly feel betrayed and I almost lost my family because of the emotional trauma that is caused within my family. I, I have, I have a really hard time being able to make sure that my family stays alive during these days. I have a one-year-old baby, a three-year-old, a 17-year-old and a 12-year-old that has ADHD. So I, I, to be honest, I feel very betrayed and hurt and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Councilmember Ariola has just two questions for you. Hold on one second.
Firefighter Vasquez, did you, did you have an Article 78 filed?
I won my Article 78 and the city has appealed it. They told the judge that I can call my job at any time and get my job back, in which I did. I called them and I also emailed them and they, they directed me back to the city saying that they were instructed that everything is being handled in court, so they denied me to give, to get my job back. So I have my, my lawyer, Christina Martinez, representing me currently in federal court.
When the FDNY told you that, did they give you a reason that you were not being allowed to come back to work even though the court mandated that you do, that you won your lawsuit and your right to go back to work? Did they give you a reason why?
No, they gave me no reason and there's a lot of confusion on why I'm not allowed to go back. It's, it just seems discriminatory in many different ways.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming and testifying, sharing your story. If you are currently on Zoom and wish to speak but not have not yet had the opportunity to do so, please use the raise hand function and our staff will unmute you. Seeing no hands, I would like to note that everyone can submit their testimony at testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. To conclude, I would like to thank my colleagues, Ms. Ariola, who's still here, and all of you who came out to share your stories. You know, making sure that the administration of benefits for city employees is a more seamless process, as well as of the staff who have helped to prepare this hearing as well. They're all city employees. We want to thank them for coming, for allowing us to have this important hearing on city benefits. In addition, we would also like to thank all of you who are still sitting in this room for sharing your stories. As I said before, this is not the first time you're here. We're looking forward to getting Resolution Five passed and for all of you to be reinstated. I'd like to take a moment to, to express my thank you for all of your interest and your advocacy today. Thank you for all the work that you do and for your, your collective service to our city. With that, this hearing is now concluded and I hope everyone makes it home safe.